All be in the world with allegiance, with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Part of any executive sessions, they were not public comment.
Morning Jeff.
Good morning.
Jeff Donkel Palo Alto, I'll make sure the decibels are down this time. Again, Ms. Gaffney, I just see she's not here to defend herself again. In robbing the taxpayers, working sixty hours in seven months is just ludicrous, sixty-five thousand dollars a year. So in seven months, she was basically getting paid a thousand dollars an hour. Some interesting TikToks on her ex-southerly Hank Clark's page, so he might want to check that out. Maybe it'll have to be Donkel for register of wills instead of commissioner next time. No update on Lisa Stevens, I assume, just put it on record, and see Mr. Opake, and again, Sidlins on that. Boots, I did want to ask last week, you weren't here, I guess naptime is in the evening, but the Clean and Green Program, what percentage of your properties that you own is on that? And what do you pay, what do you get discounted on percentage-wise? And also, how many millions in government subsidies have you received in the last ten years? Just want the public to know that you're voting on this three and a half mil increase, and you're not going to pay nearly anything compared to what the taxpayers are paying.
Answer your question, take this time off. I pay the same taxes anybody else pays on their house. I pay the same tax on all my buildings if they're at commercial.
It's not the question I asked you, on your Clean and Green, how much do you save? Well, you're answering their question, it's not the question I asked.
I'm getting there. If you'll stop, I'll continue. I won't answer your question. I pay the same taxes anybody pays on their house, pay the same taxes on my buildings, on my grain bins, on my land, we have a Clean and Green use value as opposed to the commercial value. So all the farm on my plant, his tax had a use value. If I was sell it or develop it, I'd pay six years, or seven years back taxes plus interest, just like any other farmer in Pennsylvania. As far as my, you can go to the USDA website and see, we have to receive some government payments, some insurance payments, but it's no different than any other farmer in Pennsylvania.
Okay, so again, I asked you two questions. What's the percentage of a discount you receive on your Clean and Green properties? And how many millions in government subsidies have you received in ten years? You failed to answer either one of those questions. So if you're going to answer my questions, there's the two questions I asked you, and you beat around the bush and did not answer either one of them.
Same to everybody else, so I'm sorry.
So that's your answer.
Yes, sir.
That's, again, clear transparency that you've run for how many years there?
What do you pay for taxes?
I just pay.
What's your tax bill, all these properties you buy from tax sale, what are you paying?
Well, if I had the paperwork in front of me, I would give it to you.
Well, same thing with me, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, I brought this up last week, so I'm sure, I'm sure you and your wife watched it, so you had to know what was going on when you woke up from your nap. But anyway, I could give you all the property taxes that I pay for each one of my rental units, so that has nothing to do with it. You're a public official, I'm asking you a question, you're voting on something to raise the taxes over twenty percent on the people of School County, I'm asking you what your percentage is that you pay, that you get a discount on.
Once again, no, well, once again, it's the same as every other farmer.
Okay, how many millions have you received in the last ten years in government subsidies?
Not even close to a million. That's ridiculous, that's a ridiculous accusation.
Okay, well then, how much did you receive?
I don't have it in front of me, same as you.
Okay. Okay, so anyway, I'll continue, because you don't want to answer the questions openly and honestly. I see there's more appointees that are donors and committee people getting appointed to these positions and committees, so I just want to see when that's going to stop. I see Mr. Buber has a contract that is mandatory that it gets voted on today. Why wasn't the public not informed of it? Why is it not put on the agenda? Why is it not online? According to the state, when I talked to them yesterday, I think we have three very competent solicitors here that could tell you this, any term length of a contract and any dollar amount or per hour contract must be made public on an agenda when it is going to be voted on. So the public has access to it to comment on it, or it may also be listed online as an attachment, which your par reports are, but there are no details on this, so I'm asking the commissioners formally to table this until it's done properly. I had to do this six months ago, I asked you to table something because of the same exact thing.
Time.
There's no details on there, well, I'm going to keep going because I was cut off.
No, I took the time off.
Okay, so I'm asking for that to be tabled. I have two other things, it's seven months now since I found the magazine full of hollow points in the vehicle that I got at the tax sale that's labeled for the drug task force. Is there, how's that investigation going on, why it was there, who left it there? I still have it in my safe, so I want to know an update on that.
I've asked around, I've asked Michael Payke about it, to look into it, that's as far as I've got any answer back from anybody.
You fell on deaf ears.
Yeah, I asked you.
Okay. And coroner's office, I see that building's up for sale, is there plans to keep it there when it's sold, or is that going to be another huge?
Which one?
Simon Kramer. Is that, once that sells, is that going to be a huge cost to the taxpayers now to?
No, wherever, the coroner's office always.
I mean, is there a plan? If that sells next week, is there a plan for the county to?
I have a lot to talk about, but there'll be some type of plan.
But there isn't right now.
There isn't right now, no.
Okay, but he listed it for sale, and there's no plan for the county.
It's first I'm here to list it for sale.
It's been all over the internet for a couple of weeks, but thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning.
Melinda Diver, North Mannheim Township. Would also like to follow up on a couple of points that Jeff made, and I think maybe Boots, what, maybe what he was referring to, or the question he was asking, is for any farmland preservation lands that you have, because farmland preservation, that program is a little bit different than Clean and Green. So I think maybe what he was asking, or trying to delineate, was what is the tax basis for farmland preservation lands versus Clean and Green versus, you know, just regular residential property?
It's the same as, let's see, tax basis, either commercial or Clean and Green, it's not the same, so preservation, the only difference about preservation, you can't put soil or panels on. That's the language, but it's the same, same type, whether it's Clean and Green, or if it goes from Clean and Green, it has to be Clean and Green to enter preservation. When it goes from Clean and Green to preservation, it still has the same basis that Clean and Green does, so. So if you have a neighbor that has a Clean and Green farm on one side, he pays a tax based on, based on Clean and Green value, you have a neighbor on the other side here that has a preserved farm, he pays a Clean and Green value on this, on this note.
Okay, I think, I think that's maybe what the question was, just to make sure, is that tax basis the same?
For the preservation.
Okay, all right, thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Okay, I would also like to ask about this, looks like we have a budget adjustment for emergency management services, they're needing an extra eight thousand dollars to pay the department head salary. Womp, womp, already brought this up how many times? Getting paid way too much as department head, okay.
Well, I'm going to try to, because you asked us to look into stuff, like you asked last week. So, these salaries were what Mr. Matts was advocating for when they made, with the previous commissioners, the deal for these positions, for the things. This is what Mr. Matts was advocating for, and their entire salaries are not paid by, they have no way.
I get that, but they're not a hundred percent through any grants or anything, it's not a hundred percent.
Hold on, the stipulation, always the thirty percent, I think it's like thirty percent on some of our, comes through the grants, and if any of those grant funding sources go down, those salaries will be reduced by that amount.
Oh, where do we have that? We have that in writing somewhere?
Yeah, that's somewhere in one of the things.
Okay, I'm going to be asking for a copy of that, because nowhere have I seen that their salaries will decrease if they fail to bring in the grant funds.
The eight thousand dollars is.
What had happened was, we made the promotions and hired the people, what the eight thousand dollars becomes to cover the 2024 budget.
The 2024 budget, when they were hired.
So, so then there's, because we didn't have positions filled, there was twenty thousand surplus in that, Chris, if I'm doing this wrong, help me out, there was twenty thousand surplus in that account, and they moved eight thousand over to cover the salary increase for John, for JB.
And how much was John Matts making as executive director whenever he retired? How much was he making? Sixty-eight thousand, a little over sixty-eight thousand dollars a year, and how much is John Blickley making? Anybody know? You should know.
Something I don't know, I need to, like, call him.
Wow. That much more, over twenty-five thousand dollars more? Wow, woo, hope we're getting our money's worth there. Okay, also, we'd like to point out about this contract with Paul Buber. This is a work session meeting, and why do we have motion requested at this time? Is he not going to be still considered a county employee until December 31st?
Retirement, I think, was effective December 13th.
Oh, it became effective, I'm sorry, I guess I missed that on the par report, which?
And we all thanked him at the meeting for his time, because it was his official day that he left, because it was his day of official retirement.
Okay, when's the start date? Is this contract already drawn up?
I believe so.
Yes, it starts the 16th.
Starts the 16th.
Okay, uh, do we have contract caps on that? Do we have an hourly rate? Do we have anything that's required to be given in public? So in other words, you're asking the taxpayers, or anyone from the public, to just go along with this? Has his position been advertised?
Yes, it has.
When was it advertised?
Couple of months ago.
Yes, we worked on that several times.
For several months, we were trying to fill the position, it was advertised in Indeed.
Oh, on Indeed, okay, I didn't see it post, oh, I did not see it out there.
I just posted it, I'm like, yes, it was.
On the board?
Yeah, right there, our HR person, she's saying yes.
And it's still out there?
No.
Why not?
It closed. It closed.
Personnel issue, but we haven't offered somebody right now.
What's the hourly rate?
I don't, I.
For this contract?
Oh, for the contract, I'm not sure.
Gary, do you know? Do we have an hourly rate on that? Do we have a contract cap?
We do, it's ninety dollars per hour.
How could you guys vote on a contract on an hourly rate?
Well, we knew what he was going to get, roughly, I wasn't sure the exact amount, because we have lots of hours.
You're, you're required to have that written on here. How can anyone from the public be informed when you don't even have a start date, an anticipated end date, an hourly rate?
Okay.
Contract caps, nothing!
Okay, we'll have it.
Woo, willy-nilly, let's just approve it!
Okay, it's willy-nilly.
Whoa!
Willy-nilly, willy-nilly, that's a, that's a neat little term.
Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other public comment? Risk management.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Today, on behalf of risk management, I'm requesting to approve and authorize the renewal of the excess workers' compensation insurance policy for a two-year term effective January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2026, with Midwest Employers Casualty Company at a rate of .4224 per one hundred of payroll. The premium for 2025 will be a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and the premium for 2026 will also be based on the annual payroll of 2025. So the rate for the next two years won't increase.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
The prison board?
Good morning. David Walpinski, on behalf of the prison, requests to approve and authorize a contract with mechanical service company Pistons, PA, to provide maintenance service for the emergency generator at the prison. The three-year contract period is January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027. Cost of the first year is one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ten cents, second year is one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and one cent, and the third year is one thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and one cent, for a total cost of five thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and twelve cents. We also request to approve and authorize a contract with Bycon, Hopage, New York, for the installation of cameras in the holding and medical holding cells. The contract term is November 15th, 2024, to November 15th, 2025, at a cost of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Lastly, we request to approve and authorize a contract with NextGen Automation for technical service for the School County Prison Emergency Management System from January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027, with a cost of year one, nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, year two, nine thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, year three, nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, for a total cost of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Thank you, work, thank you, work.
Granditers?
I'm not sure.
Good morning, commissioners. Today, I'm requesting approval to advertise for a public hearing for modification to the 2023 CBPG program on behalf of the borough of Shenandoah. The hearing will take place on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, in the commissioners' boardroom at 10:00 a.m. The next three are all approvals to advertise for a request for qualifications. The first one is from qualified community development consulting firms for the CBPG program for fiscal years 2025, 26, and 27. The second is from qualified engineering firms for the CBPG program for those same years of 25, 26, and 27. And the third is from a qualified firm to prepare asbestos assessments related to the demolition program funded through both the state grant and the CBPG program for 25, 26, and 27. And finally, approval to advertise for demolition projects in the boroughs of Girardville, Palo Alto, Ashland, Monday City, and Tamakwa. Bids will be due in the controller's office on Monday, January 13th, 2025, at 4:00 p.m., and the bid opening will take place on Wednesday, January 15th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Running alcohol?
John Reed presenting on behalf of the drug and alcohol. We have two addendums for approval today. The first is approval, asking for approval from addendum to Community for Center, Community, Center for Community Resources to increase their contract cap from a hundred and seventy thousand to two hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents for fiscal year 24, 25. Second addendum is with Pyramid Healthcare Incorporated to increase their contract cap from seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars to nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars for fiscal year 24, 25. Thank you. Thank you.
Children, youth.
Morning.
Morning, Carl.
Commissioner's scroll room, children, youth. We have three items to present. First, we're requesting approval of an addendum to the current agreement with Justice Works Youth Care Incorporated, Pittsburgh, dated June 22nd, 2022. This would add a transportation programming at a monthly unit rate, ten thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars, forty-six cents. This is for the vehicle lease and business overhead, and the transportation hourly rate for personnel at fifty-four dollars and fifty cents per hour. We also have an addendum to the agreement with the Delphi Village, Latrobe. That agreement is dated August 14th, 2024. This would add secure detention services to that agreement with a per diem rate, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy cents. Finally, we're requesting approval of an agreement with BCL Partners Limited Liability Corporation, doing business as Leading Youth for Excellence Life Program for their community-based residential shelter services at a per diem rate, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and nine cents, and this would have a term of November 29th, 2024, through June 30th, 2025.
Thank you. Treasurer's office.
Good morning, commissioners. So today, I'm presenting the treasurer's report for November 2024, ending balance in all accounts, ninety-six million, two hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-two cents.
Thank you. Planning and zoning?
Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning.
In the planning and zoning office, I'm requesting approval to reappoint the following Schuylkill County Planning Commission members for the four-year term beginning January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2028. Those members are David Briggs, Gary Bender, and Travis Smouts. And next item is approval to reappoint Anthony Prudential to the Schuylkill County Zoning Hearing Board for the five-year term beginning January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2029. Approval to renew the contract with Lehigh Engineering to provide zoning officer services from January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2025. Requesting approval to update the planning and zoning and GISB schedule as attached to be effective for any application or request submitted on the starting date of January 1st, 2025. Any complete application received prior to January 1st would continue to be assessed at the fee base at the current rate schedule. I just want to note that the last time that the fees were adjusted was in 2015. And then in engineering real estate, approval to renew the senior center lease between the borough of Schuylkill Haven and the county. The term for the lease will be month-to-month commencing January 1st, 2025, and expiring no later than December 31st, 2025. The rental rate shall remain the same at eighteen hundred and twenty dollars a month, being ten dollars and forty cents per square foot for the first six months, and if necessary, it will increase to nineteen hundred and twenty-five dollars to eleven dollars a square foot, and we have to be out of there by December 31st, 2025. Okay?
Thank you. Solicitor's office.
Commissioners, on behalf of the Solicitor's Office, a motion to approve, execute, and deliver the contract for the collection of delinquent real estate tax services of Schuylkill County, Pennsylvania with Elite Revenue Services LLC commence January 1st, 2025, based on ordinance number 01-2024, which was adopted September 25th, 2024. We would like that a motion be resented at this time.
I'll make a motion, and we engage Elite Revenue to affect our fact taxes. Second.
One question.
Commissioner Cudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Cass?
Yes.
Commissioners, good morning. This morning, I'd like to present the final budget resolution for the 2025 budget. It's resolution number 12-18-24. Commissioners, in connection with this resolution, the mileage increase is three point two five mils, and the preliminary budget, it was passed at three point five mils, so there's been a reduction of a quarter. of a mil.
Just on the vote, before we vote on it, we found another six hundred thousand. I know that doesn't sound like a lot to people, but we found another six hundred thousand savings and we're gonna keep looking over the next year to try to find ways to increase revenue and reduce expenses in the county. It's, you know, the budget process isn't a fun process. It's all I've been thinking about since we started, so.
As Commissioner Kudora just said too, that trying to cut expenses is difficult when Blue Cross was up by 20% a year and we have increased interest to pension funds. So it's, you know, it's, we were trying our best to find other places to make up those differences.
Okay, can we have a motion to pass the final motion? No, it's not. Can we have a final, a motion to approve the budget?
Commissioners, I have a resolution. To establish the final 2025 real estate millage at nineteen point two three mils to include eighteen point six three mils for the 2025 general fund of each assessed valuation, point six oh mils for the 2025 funded debt account, to establish the final 2025 per capita tax at five dollars, to adopt the 2025 final budget for the general fund with proposed legislative authorization to expend public funds for office department functions within the established budget parameters at an aggregate expenditure limit set at eighty-seven million, four hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and to be offset by projected revenues of eighty-one million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and supplemented by approximately six billion, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars from the general fund unassigned fund balance. To adopt the 2025 final budget for the funded debt account with proposed legislative authorization to expend funds in the amount of two million, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars for debt service to be offset by projected revenues plus a carryover restricted fund balance of two million, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. To adopt the 2025 final budget for the capital reserve fund account with proposed legislative authorization to expend public funds for projects within the established budget parameters at an aggregate expenditure limit set at one million dollars and to be offset by projected revenues plus carryover restricted fund balance of a million dollars. To adopt the 2025 final budget for the internal service fund, workers' compensation with proposed legislative authorization to expend public funds for workers' compensation claims and administrative expenses within the established budget parameters at an aggregate expenditure limit set at four hundred and seventy-five thousand to be offset by projected revenues of four hundred and seventy-five thousand. To adopt the 2025 final budget for certain special revenue fund accounts with proposed legislative authorization to expend public funds for office department functions within the established budget parameters and to be offset by projected revenues or by projected revenues plus a carryover restricted fund balance as follows. Local use funds expenditures, one million, eight hundred and one thousand, five hundred dollars, revenues, eight hundred thousand, six hundred. Liquid fuels, three million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars, revenues, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred. Demolition expenditures, three million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, revenues, one million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Barn line preservation expenditures, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars, revenues, one hundred and ninety thousand. Human service complex expenditures, three hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars, revenues, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and six dollars. 911 expenditures, nine million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars to be offset by the same amount in revenues. Tax reassessment expenditures, three million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, revenues, one hundred thousand. Other agency funds, revenues, three million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, revenues, four million, eight thousand or four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Office of Senior Services, six expenditures, six million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, sixty-nine dollars to be offset by the same amount in revenues. Drug and alcohol expenditures, four million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, revenues, three million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Mental health expenditures, eight million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, offset by the same amount in revenues. Children and youth expenditures, thirty million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars to be offset by the same amount in revenues. Domestic relations expenditures, two million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, eighty-seven dollars to be offset by revenues of two million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. To adopt the 2025 final budget for other special revenue fund accounts with proposed legislative authorization to expend public funds for special programs such as aging advisory, offender supervision, SCBG program, affordable housing, coal lands, DUI, other escrow, conduit, Schuylkill County Transportation Authority, Marcel Shell, Emergency Solutions Grant within established parameters at an aggregate expenditure limit set at twenty million, five hundred and eighty, five hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars to be offset by projected revenues plus a carryover fund balance of the same amount.
I have a motion to approve the budget. So, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Second. All's in favor? Oh, call a question, sorry.
Commissioner Kudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioners, I also want to pass along that on your agenda today, there is a total of fourteen budget adjustments. The budget adjustments have been posted outside the boardroom.
Attorney General?
Today, one approval of a contract with Paul Boob to provide financial authorities and oversight to the finance department. I'm okay. If you want to table it at this time, I'm okay with it. As long as the start date remains the same, the start date is up.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Just when we, when, so it's ninety an hour, the start date's December 16th.
Right.
And what else was the other thing? And when's it expire?
It started the sixteenth.
Yeah, but when should we, should we redo it in six months? Is it a date?
What I was planning on doing here is the contract is to the end of the year because at the beginning of the year, we bring somebody in from the finance department, those responsibilities may change somewhat. So it'd be a different contract and maybe different circumstances than that. Just to get it through the end of the year, so the department has some content with you.
Okay.
Just to this year, you're saying?
That is correct.
To the end of this year, okay.
Sweet table till next week, vote on it.
Yep.
And next, on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, School Community Action, the administrative agency for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, request a two-year extension for the following two contracts. Contract 2021 dash 04 for Schuylkill County Housing Counseling Program, the contract extension is from July first, 2024 to June 30th, 2026. Contract 2021 dash 08, Weatherization, Differral Home Rehab Program, the contract extension is from July first, 2024 to June 30th, 2026. These come from recommendations from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board.
Good morning, commissioners. I have an item for approval here, requested for revision to the policy detailing the procedures for employee identification badges. This will clarify the language that each employee should use their own badge and that no one may copy their badge. The intention is to provide the needed access to the appropriate people and preserve the integrity of our county's security system. Policy was initiated by my office. And I have a few personnel actions here in children and youth, the promotion of Anna Smallwoods, the county case worker two, the rate is twenty-two point three eight three six, effective twelve thirty twenty-four, rate is per the contract. And also in children and youth, the appointment of Mindy Gravy as a county case worker two, rate is twenty-three point zero five five one, effective one six twenty-four. That rate is also per the union contract. All appointments are pending drug, test, and physical where appropriate, and all actions involving salary or for positions being created are pending salary approval. That's all I have.
Thank you. This is very new business. Just to know, our next commissioners meeting will be held Tuesday, December 24th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. due to the Christmas holiday being on a Wednesday, December 25th. So, plan a motion to adjourn?
So.
Uh, seconded. Okay, so salary board. For the executive sanctions?
They were done.
Public comment for salary board?
Jeff Dunkle, Palo Alto. So, this contract for ninety dollars an hour, you said for a year. Again, we're going back to the.
I think it's to the end of this year.
To the end of this year?
Correct. Number sixteen, December 31st, 2024.
Okay, so after that, is he gonna be retained past that?
Yes, there will be a new mechanism in place. The responsibilities will change somewhat as we transition to a director of.
Yeah, we're trying to fill the position.
So then this Monday, Tuesday, and today, we just paid him probably a hundred and eighty dollars an hour to come in here based off of a contract that was not made to the public or voted on, but it's gonna be backdated, which was a practice at the beginning of this year, was stated that was gonna be stopped. So basically, he came here today, made at least a hundred and eighty bucks, probably a couple hundred bucks on a contract that's not been voted on or approved or made public, that you guys had no clue what the rate was, the term was, the length was, but yet he's making ninety dollars an hour.
That's not right. We knew they were gonna beat us because we couldn't, we haven't had the position.
But when I asked you how much, you weren't.
We hadn't had the position filled yet. That's, we're negotiating with some people.
Okay, but you just had to sit here and ask Gary.
I didn't ask the exact rate. I don't remember every rate for every contract.
So if I, so if I didn't raise it about the, the.
I would have had no.
Illegal part of it.
Paul, Paul does a great job for the county. I.
This has nothing to do with Paul. It has to do with the practices of the county. I think he does a great job.
It was tabled and we'll be voting on it next week. All the clarifications are provided.
What I'm saying is, if I didn't bring that up and address what the state says, that would have been pushed right through, voted on and approved, which would have been done illegally.
I don't think it would have been illegal. Dave?
I don't think it would have been.
It would have been illegal.
The rates and terms must be made public.
Designee contract, isn't it?
It's not listed as designee contract. It needs to be made public to the.
I'm just talking about what our solicitor says.
And again, that's fine, but then he's wrong, and I'll prove it to him by the state. But for you to sit there and vote on a contract or present a contract, that you have no clue what it is, is very.
Jeff, we did.
You had to sit here and ask Gary details of the contract.
After you brought it up, I was gonna table it and say we'll do it next week.
Because you didn't know the terms. But anyway.
The Dunkle's, we need somebody in that financial position that does a good job.
Does he have a cap on the amount of hours till the end of the year? Or is it gonna be thirty, thirty-nine hour, thirty-eight hours every week?
No.
In January, we will probably put a cap on the number of hours for that.
Does he have a cap on it till the end of the year, was the question? Why does everybody avoid the questions?
No.
Right. He can just work as many hours as he wants.
Yes, he can.
Sure. Well, he'll, he'll work as Mr. Bender directs.
Directs, yeah.
No, he won't, and he feels like he's gonna work this, because you're.
That's the question I'm asking. Like, what are the details? Nobody knows. But he's, he's here now getting ninety dollars an hour, and you guys have nothing made public on what it is. It's, you guys are just blowing money wherever you can.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
You are.
Yep, one hundred percent.
You, 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 you sat here, you sat here and broke your arms again, patting yourselves on the back for saving a quarter. Hang on, hang on.
Jeff, nobody is, no, it's not your time. Nobody's patting themselves on the back.
You just did. You saved six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I said it doesn't seem like a lot.
On a twenty-two million dollar deficit.
I said it doesn't seem like a lot.
It's not.
Six hundred thousand dollars. To a normal person in Schuylkill County, six hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. It is to me. And I listen, and not one of us didn't agonize over this, this budget.
What, what did you three give up as part of the budget?
Raised it for the last seven years.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about this budget, twenty-two million dollar deficit that you oversaw that everybody called coming. Not him, you. You knew it was coming. You wasted the ARBA money. You wasted the CAREZAC money. Twenty-two million dollar deficit. Excuse me, what did you give up? What did you give up? Go ahead, say a raise. What did you give up? Why don't you take a cut in salary? You're never here. You fall asleep during the meetings. Why don't you take a pay cut? You treat it as a part-time job, get paid as a part-time job. How many hours you working here a month? Nothing close to what you should for sixty-five thousand dollars a year. So I'm asking you, Boots, what have you given up? Exactly.
My, my, my mental sanity, my sleep.
Yeah. You didn't give up any sleep because you got in here while you're getting paid sixty-five thousand dollars a year.
But to think that we didn't, that's all I think about is this budget. That's.
You have a little bit less to worry about because you haven't been here.
I agonize.
But he knew a twenty-two million dollar deficit was coming.
Jeff, I agonized over this budget. I don't want to pay more taxes. I hate the fact.
One other thing, quick. The prison, eighty-four thousand just in overtime. Is that place short-staffed? Or is there vacancies? Are they hiring? There's nothing posted outside? There's nothing online?
There's money coming out of regular ways to be able to have the positions filled to cover the overtime.
I, I, again, the question was, are they short-staffed and are they, is there vacancies?
Yeah, what has been going on at the prison? There's been a lot of prisoners that have illnesses.
People in hospitals.
Fired to be hospitalized. So when that happens, a guard.
You have to babysit them, right.
Yeah, the whole time.
So it is causing a little bit of an issue with their hours because there's been.
We had one person, it's HIPAA, but one per, one went to a hospital and was an extended stay. So we had to stay twenty-four hours, the whole time.
The person, the person.
Oh, they had to have two COs the whole time with them, not just one. That's, you know, we, we have to do that. We have no choice.
And I believe the person with the DA's office, I was copying the badge, was there any investigation, reprimand, firing?
Um, it's a personnel issue, but they were.
I mean, we.
There was a resignation.
A resignation, okay. Because I'm just saying, there was investigations on women that didn't do what Boots accused them of.
Yeah, there was, there, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other public comment for salary board? I think you're not yelling today.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're doing good today. You're not yelling.
Oh gee, I think I do good every time, whether I'm yelling or not.
When you're not yelling.
Melinda Divert, North Mannheim Township. So, Paul Boober paid ninety dollars an hour to come and attend the meeting, read off the resolution. Could not, I, I'm hearing that Chris Kearns is a very capable, intelligent fella.
And I agree, I agree with that statement.
Couldn't Chris have read all that off and, and done all of that instead of us incurring extra expense to have Paul Boober come and grace us with his presence?
I guess not, because he was here to do it and there's other obligations that he has to handle today as part of his job as a financial officer.
So from Monday, which is when the contract started, from Monday till the end of this month, he's pretty well being allowed to work full-time hours as he was previously working as a county employee?
If he is, I guess so. If he's doing, if he's working for those hours, they put the timer, I guess so.
Okay, I did notice that our county administrator said something about that his contract would be amended. So we're gonna actually hire a new director of the finance department, but we're still gonna be paying Paul Boober?
Well, probably for training and to help the new person get up to speed on everything. For a little bit, yeah, till we find a new person.
And that is basis.
Okay.
On that is basis.
It kind of sounded like some, somebody's gonna be coming on or somebody's gonna be hired and that's why.
We're, we're hoping somebody comes up. There's offers out. So we're hoping they come up.
Chris, you weren't interested in the top position? Come on. Okay, so that was one of the questions that I had. We, we gotta start getting some things in line because I, I don't know how much more the taxpayers of this county can handle. We're pretty, pretty well at our wits' end. And if you say that you're looking to cut costs wherever you can.
I know.
We're not looking hard enough.
I know. Like I said.
Call a couple people in and say, hey, what would y'all know about stuff? Maybe, maybe you could.
I understand what you're saying, Laura. Like, even like, I don't know, I did one of, another thing, since you came back every Monday, I looked into, like you said, planning and zoning, that if North Mannheim Township were changed or amended planning and zoning, it would come to us then.
Right.
It would come to us for review, but we have no authority to change anything they do because they have their own salary. We can make recommendations, but it is non-binding. So I just wanted to clarify that because you said it'll come to us for our, we have to approve it.
And it does. No, I did not say it had to be.
Yes, you did.
I didn't say it had to be approved by the county planning and zoning. It comes to the county planning and zoning for any sort of recommendations, tips, hints, suggestions, et cetera. And it does the same thing in North Mannheim Township. We have our own planning commission in North Mannheim, purely advisory. They cannot make any decisions as well. So it's the same as it is with the county. That is, final decisions are up to the supervisors of the municipality. Thank you.
Thank you. Human resources?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, new business. You read that one, I guess, to the salary. Oh, you read the new business.
Rule requested that the salary board ratify the 2025 salaries for county employees as approved by the Board of Commissioners at the Work Session Meeting in December 18, 2024 as part of the final 2025 budget. This motion includes compensation for union exempt and non-union, non-exempt employees. Motion requested at this time.
So. Call a question?
Commissioner Kudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller, Kentship?
Yes.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
See everybody next week, Christmas Eve. I thought you were going down to work, Carol.
Leaving right now.